You got me.
Okay, well, that's Sam Hugh times, that's for sure.
I was only remembering the ones I've been involved in.
What's that been?
I only remember the ones I've been here for the renewal of.
Yeah, I can understand that.
Yeah, so they own a bunch down here, too, like Dr. Holmes' house is down here and has a big W on it.
Oh, okay.
But this church is in my house. Yeah, so.
Oh, this, oh, I was thinking, on my phone, yeah, okay, I know, that's market, I was thinking, okay, so that's.
That's Walsh's driveway. So Walsh rents this land from this church.
Okay.
For their parking lot. Long term, their plan is definitely to take this road and. They're doing it, but I've been. So this is just phase three. Or, I don't remember.
I thought it was nineteen, it was nineteen oh three, nineteen fifteen, is, was it nineteen thirty two?
This nineteen oh eight.
How are you? Good, good, good to see you. Oh, hey, he's here.
He doesn't say.
What?
Thirty minutes. Oh.
Oh, fifteen thirty.
Yeah, so then this one, so they're doing one, two, three. I guess we didn't end up going across the street. We had talked about. It's a type two annexation because Walsh is tax exempt anyway, so we don't care if it's private estate. Like, if we're not, nobody's getting any property taxes.
Yeah, that's a good point.
The way you're.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
So they had that conversation.
Yeah, we're only doing three on the.
Right, okay.
Recommended remediation of this property to satisfy EPA.
Okay.
EPA says, we want the payed plan, we have to do the paid plan, we like what he, what they produced.
Okay.
It's gonna cost me a lot of money.
Yeah.
Well, generally, if you have.
Unfortunately, they already.
All the dirt that you piled up a lot at western, eastern border, put about eight feet of dirt to bank that swamp.
Yes, yes.
You gotta check all that out. So that's gonna cost like fifteen, twenty grand.
Yeah.
And so they reached back and said, we need to save the, just to let us know. I didn't do it.
Yeah. So he says, he still says all that excess from the, where the pipe goes, all that water runoff goes all over his property.
Hey, now, it's a good.
Run. Run what?
When, when the major property. When the Nimasella fills up.
Yeah.
Then the water from the.
You see.
It flow. Because you can't.
Find a reason.
So it backtracks, it flows backwards into the main pipe swamp.
Uh-oh.
Okay.
And crazy, we didn't design it, this is just the way it is, I mean, if the Maytag fills up today, it's.
That was possible.
Got it.
In behind your own house, that was the way it always worked. So then he tried to cut off that.
Yeah, he did.
And all this stuff, and the EPA says, well, you can't handle it, you change the.
See, and I think of this conversation so much, like, you can't get off the phone, and he's like.
He's done. He shouldn't be a year or so.
Yeah, oh, he did, he was like, he's trying to run that.
Well, I don't talk to him.
Well, I told everybody, you don't, you shouldn't talk to him, this is involving litigation entirely.
He says, there's no litigation now, he's like, people talk to me, there's no litigation, no, it's.
Because I said, we shouldn't talk to them, because what you said.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He might, knowing you said something, or he might say that you said something.
Well, then he was like, the house, and that's three levels, they, you know, and he didn't do anything, and I was like, even more.
No, they have to do.
I did, I lost. It's unfortunate because the site is great, and they're like, that was a good nice house, I mean, they really did do some good things. Yeah, and then they pushed, they used some materials until they touched it off, but.
Well, I mean, we're in for the thing, important things, and we're in the front of these situations, right, so like, what we wanna do is, the next time. ZBOA, various, do this kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Post upon.
Yeah.
You need to post upon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Set it up on marketplace. Project dies, we would like to go against the bonding company, hit the money, and use the money to do that.
Right. You have a GPS. Okay, well, that was, or, and they did, those documents, I'm like, just trying to see, like, you showed me this.
So the letter was basically, we call up, start to allow, hey, this property, other people that.
He tried to say the neighbor behind him, he never loved him, I'm like, he's never called me, I said, he's never called me. He also says he calls, and he can't talk to the city, I go, he's never called. I said, I can trade him a play, but he's never called.
But then I've been out there, and I've talked to them, but, so there's a place to.
Yeah.
She's lost Walsh, and disconnected that.
Wait, a while back.
A while back.
The whole.
I worked at.
Especially if it fell on.
Yeah, so it's just crazy, but.
It's, uh, we're all, it's a little.
Yeah, and so he called me back today, back, I texted him, and it just.
So don't worry, it's.
Quiet, she's like, it's not funny, I go, it's not funny, it's that nobody's called me, you have to understand that, because he's like. I'm telling you, like, no one's like, I wish there was a. I'm not giving hate now. I still, yeah, I'm getting calls, still. And then they pull, you see that? The, the phone, we pull this down. Okay. I know. Yeah, just, yeah, yeah. Hey, how's it going? Good. Hi.
How's it going? Okay, and now call to order, the committee of the whole meeting for September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, the time is seven PM, Ben, would you please call the roll? Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Wyerick?
Here.
Member McLeister?
Here.
Member Wyerick?
Here.
Member Schreier?
Here.
Member Holt?
Here.
And member R?
Here.
Seven present. All right, let's start off with community and economic development, Daryl.
Thank you, Matt, we have three items for consideration this evening, the first is, due to the diligence of our clerk, we discovered that a parcel at Walsh that we thought we had annexed was not, labor work was never properly submitted to council. It goes to the odd, the theme that the administration is talking about, having competent people managing your affairs, we sought this annexation, we completed through council, and somewhere along the line, someone who was entrusted with the responsibility of following through failed. So, we're back to square one, and you have that resolution, as part of, part of it is that we've got to state the services that are going to be provided, that's what this piece of legislation does, and we'd like to have this done on an emergency, Ben, do you have anything to add? Administration, mayor? Okay, then I'll have a motion to place this on the agenda for next week's council meeting as an emergency.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, very good. Item two, we have a request from the administration to adjust the rates and fees for building and zoning permits and associated plan reviews. Now, a couple of things, as we, as we look at the list and, and we consider this, the first is that this is not simply raising fees, this is a true-up, some are going up, some are going down, and in addition, some of these are being calculated in a different fashion, you know, Ben can touch on this, but it comes, it also comes to a problem that we've had here on council when it comes to rates and fees and charges, we haven't touched this since two thousand eleven, so we basically have a dozen years where it's been static, and as we're just moving through the budget process, we all know that one of the things that has not been static has been the cost of our permits and inspections. We've got it sized properly, we're delivering timely business service, we've made terrific strides in terms of customer service, online assistance, but all of these have come at a cost. So, you have the, you have in your packets the summary, Ben, do you wanna, hang on, just a second, maybe before we get too far along here, is there anything you wanna add to this at this point, while I fumble with my paperwork?
I would defer to Patrick first.
Patrick?
Yes, so, we're just saying, you know, we've been, been working on this for the better part of eight months, so all of this year, along with all the other things that we have to do, we meet with the building department, the inspectors, Ben, myself, administration, you know, at all, and we went through these, you know, line by line, talked about each and every one of these things, and made these adjustments. I, I feel that what's important for us to keep in mind, and I get this question a lot, and it's really, it's, it's really not the proper question, you know, so, which is, well, you know, why is a plumbing permit seventy-five dollars here and it's, or a hundred dollars here, and it's fifty dollars in acid? I don't know why it's fifty dollars in acid, but if they choose to subsidize their building department operations with their general fund, they can certainly choose to do so, but, you know, I'm, you know, I felt that over the years, we shouldn't be in a race to the bottom of the barrel, we have to, you know, look at this as what it relates to our ability to deliver these services, and in the past, you know, I'm sure that whatever the fees were, were probably objectionable because we didn't provide the service, a terrible building department, but I think that we've, we've embraced that, addressed that, and have met with various folks over the years, whether they were cement contractors, or vinyl siding contractors, to kind of work out arrangements where, you know, it doesn't make sense to have a permit here, or in, in these other instances. Here, though, we think that these are the appropriate cost structure for what we need to do on an ongoing basis, we're largely, you know, built out, you know, some of the other communities, if you look at, you know, areas like Alliance and Lewisville, that had tremendous amounts of open ground around their community, and, you know, they can, you know, charge more for, you know, new construction there, to help subsidize the existing operations for smaller things, we don't have that luxury, we're largely all built out, so we, most of our stuff is, you know, residential redo.
Again, I think the, as, as Ben has demonstrated with his analysis of the rental inspections, the purpose of permitting is to ensure that public safety is protected, as well as our infrastructure, we wanna make sure that people are properly connecting to the sanitaries, we wanna make sure that our water systems are protected from backflow and contamination, we wanna make sure that the individual who's installing a water heater doesn't do it in such a fashion that A, people die from carbon monoxide poisoning, or B, the house explodes and the neighboring houses are damaged or destroyed. So, that's, you know, that's kind of, you know, as we look at this, this is what, again, what differentiates, I think, areas that don't have code or have very modest code, we live in condensed area, it's compact, we need these kinds of things to protect public health and safety, and as Patrick said, gotta pay for it.
I do have one comment, and I'd like council to consider, and administration can of course weigh in, that I'm thinking that the zoning board of appeal application and the planning commission application, at two hundred dollars might be a little punitive for residential, and that maybe we could cut that in half for residential, and then do two hundred dollars for commercial, putting in a request for, for that reminds me of the neighbors that wanted to get permeable pavers, and even though they didn't actually go that route, to spend two hundred dollars to get that approval, or to get that changed, and then we changed the ordinance, I just think that might be a little much, and maybe we could have two rates there, I don't know if that would be feasible, certainly think it would cover the cost for the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals meeting.
Administration, do you have a take?
Well, you know, as it relates to Z, we'll start with the ZBOA first, I mean, I'm of the opinion that, you know, you know, what we would like to go to ZBOA are really just the most earnest and serious of cases. For seventy-five hours, we can, we can spend a lot of time just having a lot of frivolous cases, I think, and I think a lot of what has gone there has been to that respect, but I hear what Mr. Matheny is, is saying there, on the, on the planning commission, you know, a lot of this depends on what it is, the project is, that has to go to the planning commission, so, most of those are, you know, commercial applications, if we look at their, their agendas, it's been largely that, so I don't, I don't think that the two hundred is out of line, I mean, I'll take a look at it again between now and next meeting, talk with the superintendent, but let's keep in mind that, you know, that the, in the way that we run these meetings now in a much more professional way, you know, we have, you know, court stenographer at every.
Well, I think, I think you raise a good point, is because, as we know, these, these have a, a, struggling for the right term, but the bottom line is, we have added expense, no matter how insignificant, what might be, in our view, an insignificant issue, it nonetheless can be adjudicated, which is why we have the court stenographer, and we have go through the preparation of the docket and the materials to ensure that the facts are laid out, presented in the files complete, I guess that's what I'm struggling for.
And that's why I think for the residential side, it's not as intense, it's not as strong as the commercial side, and that's why I was looking for variants for the residential.
Well, let's, let's.
I'd just like to weigh in, since I am the former chairman of the, the planning commission, I, I definitely get where you're coming from, you know, not wanna be as heavy-handed, I think a lot of people think that we feed them to death when it comes to building permits, which I don't necessarily think is the case, but I do agree with, with what Patrick was saying, you know, I'm trying to rack my brain, the number of times we had just your average residential homeowner come through planning commission, maybe once or twice in the time that I was there, I mean, so it's, it's really not a normal occurrence, and, and I think for the, I mean, I'm okay leaving it the two hundred, I mean, for the handful of times that it's actually come to the planning commission.
See, then I think the opposite, because I think if there's one or two, then why are we, why are we making them pay the two hundred? Go as low as we can, you know, for them, and those, if those aren't our prime, I guess, targets, if that's not really who we're concerned about, but for some reason, something happened with the way their property was zoned, or they need something, let's give them a break.
I can only think of a handful of residential ones in the last.
I mean, the one residential one that sticks in my mind is the church over here on Windy Lane, they separate, which wasn't even a resident, residence, they separated off the, the parsonage to sell, and I think there was another issue that, again, I actually think it was St. Paul's.
One of the sanctuary as well, but.
But those, that was from a developer, so, really, I don't know that I can think of any.
Not very often.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, it's rare for planning, it's more common for zoning, and I just think that a hundred bucks for a resident to go up in front of them to speak their case, I think two might be a little punitive, it's a minor change.
Minor.
Let's do this.
I'm indifferent.
Let's have the administration ponder this, I'll take a motion, I'll place this on the agenda next Monday night, first reading, with the caveat that we will come back and revisit this and possibly amend it.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. Third item on the agenda, the administration continues to reclassify parcels, we have tonight for our consideration the reclassification of forty-eight parcels, that if you look at your legislation, you will see that we have categorized those in four exhibits, A, B, C, and D. We won't run through these individually, but these are typically moving from GBA to Main Street North, GBA to Main Street North, general business to Main Street South, general business B to residential to family, general business, GBA, residential single, to, in residential single family, small, that's R fifty, to Main Street Gateway South, GBA to residential single family, small lot, and residential single family, large lot, to Main Street South Gateway. Let's take a quick peek at the exhibits, you have them in your packet. Maps up. Are there any questions about A, you'll see that the proposed is that little area where the condos are on Sherberry, David, that's up in your ward. This is a better alignment in terms of density, which we wanna preserve at seven units per acre, so we're pretty close there. Questions or comments? Now, we are going to send this to the planning commission, that's our end result tonight, but just in case we have any questions, short agenda. Map B, for those, there's just a little touch of property, proposed Main Street North. All fair Oaks, any questions about that? Okay. Map C, this is down in the southeast corner, between Mississippi and Rose Lane. Any questions? Proposed, Main Street South. Okay, and let's go then to exhibit D, map D. Any questions? Mr. McLeister? Any questions?
Nope. Looks good.
Mr. Matheny? Administration, we good? Okay, okay, then we won't belabor it this evening, it will come back to us, a move that we send this to the planning commission for its consideration.
Story of seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That concludes our exciting portion of the agenda.
We have to motion to move it to the planning commission.
I thought I just did.
That was, wasn't that for the council?
So you moved for the.
No, I moved to the planning commission, and then we, we'll delay action, I'll make a motion, we'll delay action until we see the planning commission.
Story of seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good, now we're.
Okay, moving on to ordinance and rules, John?
Well, this is an ordinance establishing chapter seven eleven, yard care providers of the codified ordinances of the city of North End and to regulate the provisions of landscaping services, basically, this is a time, we have no set time, there's people cutting grass at six AM and cutting grass later, we wanna have it from seven AM to seven PM, I didn't quite understand, Ben, the seven PM to ten PM, or was that a typo?
So if you've already, let's say you started at the property at six thirty, seven PM hits, we would rather you finish at the property instead of stopping and coming back tomorrow, so.
So what stops contractors from not beginning a job at six thirty?
Well, I think the idea, John, is that you, you need to finish at seven PM, but if, if you can be done by ten PM, we would prefer that you be done, rather than come back the next day and tie up the next day, I mean, certainly, this will be monitored, but, and I think mostly by residents, but if somebody's coming by at six PM, and they're going to take down a tree, it isn't gonna be done by ten PM, they're gonna be working in the dark, and, so, I mean, you know, if we have to tweak that and come back, we will, but I think this is a great starting point, you know, and we've had a number of complaints come through the city, throughout the whole city, on this type of operation, and many thought that there was a, you know, like a noise ordinance that would take, this would provide some sort of code section that we could go to, but when we go to the, the, the noise ordinance, and you read it carefully, I believe its intent was to deal with, you know, loud music, loud radios, partying, to that kind of extent, it never really was intended to deal with this, now, we have a separate provision in our waste hauling contract that they cannot begin before, you know, six AM, and, we don't want people banging around trash cans, you know, five o'clock in the morning, so.
They start right at six.
They start right at six. Preferably at your house, on my street, yeah, so, and that's done by contract negotiation and that kind of thing, you know, with that, just as an aside, I mean, if you, if we regulate the trash, the trash hauler, Kimbo has to come no earlier than eight, then your fee is gonna be higher, so, I mean, there is this give and take, but in this case, what we're saying is that, hey, there are people that, you know, you have to go to bed at a certain time, they have to get up and work early in the morning, they're trying to put children down to go to sleep for school, and you're running a, a tree felling service at nine, ten, eleven o'clock, as we've seen in some cases, it's completely unacceptable, so we think this was a, a good opportunity for us to be responsive to our constituent needs, it didn't put any, you know, I think, real onerous burden on anybody, no fee involved, just, should be common sense, should be common courtesy, but sometimes we need a little nudge.
Go ahead, Jay.
No, you go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, would administration consider, instead of that ten PM, looking at how daylight works through the summer month? at how daylight works through the summer months, and if the landscaper's trying to get caught up after a couple of days of rain, to just make it dusk? There's a set time every day when dusk hits, and you're not gonna be working after dusk. Do we really want a large piece of equipment in the street at night at ten o'clock? You know, the landscapers have their gates down and pylons up. Is that a safety concern working at after dark?
Well, I, you know, I don't like, you know, a little bit of pushback. I don't care for dusk. Dusk is, is not defined. Dusk is a time that changes every day, and so I don't want to put a burden upon the administrative department, the code enforcement of police department, to have to determine, when, when was dusk today? When did the sun set? You know, I understand that, you know, it is lighter later during the summer, but there are still folks that need to get to bed, whether it's, you know, still light at nine o'clock or, or not.
Like I said, you said it's a start, so.
I'd like to add, I think this is great. I talked with a couple of residents several weeks ago who ran into a situation with lawn mowers early in the morning. I just had a couple of questions. One, or I guess, second I'll add is, is I, I do like the ten PM caveat, if it means they don't have to come back. I don't want it to be like a every day till ten o'clock, but it's clearly written in here that that's not what it is. But the question that I have is, is I see it referencing landscaper. What about me? If I get my big old, you know, lawnmower, monster lawnmower out and start mowing my lawn at six o'clock in the morning?
This is, this is for landscaping services for compensation.
Okay.
Unless you're gonna pay yourself to do it.
No. I mean, maybe a beer, but, you know, not six in the morning, so, but.
But, you know, so it, it, you know, it would be exempted there, you can do that. Some of us have large lawn mowing equipment, and we could go out there and do that, but we would just say that what we find is that most, I would say, most people that live in a residential neighborhood have a care and concern for their neighbor.
Right.
And that, you know, I, you know, I wouldn't go out, you know, I don't go out before nine AM to, to cut my grass, because I think I'm trying to be extra, you know, I got young kids that live around me, and I'm not wanting to wake them up.
Same here.
But with a landscaping service, that's not what they do. They, they have to, they try to get to as many as they can.
Okay. So as long as you guys are comfortable leaving it just landscapers, and, and I, I just wanted to.
I am. I would not want it to be with the people.
Okay.
There's just, there's too many situations, and then that gets away from, go talk to your neighbor. We are not trying to not have you communicate with your neighbor and work this out. And then if something escalates, then you can call the police. But I'm assuming that ninety-nine percent can talk to their neighbors and figure it out. And it's just courtesy, you know, and I don't need the government mandate even when I can mow.
Darryl?
I had a chance to discuss this with a family member who had a fifty-year career in commercial landscaping. And I said, why would somebody be mowing before seven AM? And he's, he said, understand that when the mowing occurs, it's done with a large commercial mower. They often hit things and throw things. And commercial landscapers like to get into places that have parking lots and get it done before the parking lot begins to fill with, for the business day, minimize damage. If you look at our ordinance as proposed, it says that the residential area means any property within the city zoned as an R district or on property adjacent to an R district. So as you move up and down Main Street, we have a lot of places that get lawn service that have parking lots that are adjacent to residential areas. They would be prohibited from working on Main Street prior to seven, before business occurs at the site. So I just lay that out, that it may be problematic for the landscapers, again, who want to get in and look. For example, I look down on South Main at the corner of Bonnet and Main Street, west side, northwest corner, there's a large office building there, it's got a lot of grass, big parking lot. Is it a real concern? I don't know. My contact didn't tell me it was, but he said, hey, this is why people do it. He said, Rices is out at the hotels before seven, down at Everhard, mowing for a reason, because they don't want to blow grass, they don't want to blow stones, they don't want to chip up and damage cars, they want to get in and get out. So, that's, could be the unintended consequence.
Would this apply to services like Asplund?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. This, I, I mean, I've seen them at three o'clock in the morning.
I can remember that a couple of years ago.
And people complain like that as well. And then I want to make sure that, so, relevant land and lands, and landscaping work isn't snow removal, snow plowing, anything like that? No?
No, it's, this is yard care service. I don't believe that it's written to define snow removal.
Okay.
The snow removal would be more along the lines of an emergency, could be an emergency if, you know, four inches come down at three in the morning.
Yeah, right.
It's gotta be done when it gets done.
Absolutely, right. That was my concern.
You don't really have a choice over that, but you do have a choice when your grass can be cut. And I, you know, and I go up and down Main Street too. I mean, you know, City Hall gets, you know, we have a number of municipal buildings that are serviced by residential, that are, were adjacent to, maybe not City Hall, but some of the other buildings owner adjacent to residential communities. And, you know, they can be serviced between seven AM and seven PM. I don't see an issue with it, whether it's building down on South Main. You know, we have to establish some type of quality control over the type of community we want to be.
Well, I mean, theoretically, Patrick, your point is, I guess goes to Dave's comment about sunrise and sunset, dawn and dusk. Conceivably, you could be mowing at five thirty in the morning, because the sun is up at five thirty.
My deal was only for dusk.
I understand, I understand. But you, but, but, you know, you could, conceivably, so.
But I would just say, again, you can kind of closing, that, well, I think you guys get the gist of it, at least with this administration, we're, you know, willing to try it, see how it goes, come back and tweak things if needed. We're very open about that, that, you know, you don't often have every scenario before you when you're passing legislation, no matter where you're passing it. It's just the willingness to come back and say, okay, well, here's what we've learned.
Let me, let me ask one question, I'd like, might just double that. You and I were in the room, maybe a couple of us, when we had individuals complaining about noise at the Myers Control Power Business Hoover East Factory. We don't see this morphing into something that is going to expand beyond lawn mowers and tree services, do we? You know, so the, the buses that are getting started and beginning to move around, and you know, the, the backup horns are going at six fifteen in the morning, snow plows, they're out working, you know, we're not gonna see some sort of general, hey, you know, you're waking me up, it's, I mean, the normal stuff that goes with urban living.
Yeah.
We're not gonna see that morph into something, are we?
I agree. Darryl, I think that there's, you know, very different circumstance there to here. This is something that is completely within your control.
Okay.
You are the property owner, having the service performed on your property. The noise is gonna be emanating from your property.
Yeah.
You have the ability, even without this ordinance, to tell your landscaper, don't come before seven AM.
Right.
But, you know, in, in some instances, we feel that we need, we need to have that because either they don't want to do it, and people are afraid to ask, or.
And candidly, we're not dealing with that many cases anymore.
No, and I think, you know, a lot of these folks are, you know, I think, you know, if you deal with the Rices or landscaping, or some of the other local landscaping, or even the local tree services, you know, I think because they're local, they get it.
Yeah.
They understand, they're trying to, you know, work within the community and, and meet that, that community standard. But, you know, so many of these places aren't from this area, they come in to service this area, and they don't care, just, how many can I get done today?
Well, you know, you could have roofers, for example, often start very early, the summer, it's really hot. Well, I'll make a move, I'll make a motion, place this on the agenda.
Yes, now, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I will tender, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn. Go Brown.
Alrighty.